At this time, I will call this meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Certainly. Commissioner Baker?
Present.
Commissioner Bodak?
Here.
Commissioner Dellisford?
Present.
Commissioner Granados? Commissioner Kowalski? Commissioner Mirabella?
Present.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Present.
And Commissioner Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudded?
Here.
Chairwoman, please note there are seven Commissioners present for this evening's regular meeting.
Clerk of the Board, please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag.
Homily we ask God to give her of peace and love her of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his Spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Clerk of the Board, please read the Statement of Compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 in the Administration Building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a need to go into executive session. County Council, please make your statement relative to tonight's executive session.
Thank you, Chair. Pursuant to provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public body may enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing certain enumerated subjects. This Board now wishes to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation strategy in the matter of Kenilworth Republican Committee Members versus Union County Clerk, Union County Board of Elections, and Union County. The minutes of the executive session shall be separated from the minutes of the open public session. The minutes of the executive session, redacted as appropriate and necessary, shall be available in approximately 30 days. The clerk to the Board shall retain the original minutes until such time as the confidential limitations have been removed, at which time they shall be made available. Upon the affirmative vote of a majority of the members present, the Board may retire to executive session. Upon the Board's return, it may or may not take formal action on the matters discussed. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. A motion was made by Commissioner Bodak and was seconded by Commissioner Mirabella. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak?
Yes.
Commissioner Dellisford?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Aye.
And Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudded?
Aye.
Chairman, you have seven votes in the affirmative to enter into executive session.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you. We will return. May I have a motion to return from executive session?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak?
Present.
Commissioner Dellisford?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Aye.
And Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudded?
Aye.
Chairman, Chairwoman, you have seven Commissioners voting in the affirmative to return from executive to our regular meeting.
Thank you. County Council Bergen, do you have anything to announce as a result of our executive session?
Thank you, Chair. There is nothing to announce at this time.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve communications?
So moved, Madam Chair.
A second?
Second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak?
Yes.
Commissioner Dellisford?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Aye.
And Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudded?
Aye.
Chairwoman, you have seven votes in the affirmative on all the communication.
Thank you. The meeting is now open to the public for the purpose of commenting on resolutions being offered for adoption and/or on any governmental issues that a member of the public feels may be of concern. Kindly state your name and town of residence for the record, and if speaking on a resolution on the agenda, please note the resolution number to which you are referring and adhere to the five-minute time limit.
Hi, good evening. My name is Alexis Rain Walker. My address is 143 West 70th Avenue in Roseville. Can't hear me?
Yes, that's better.
Can you hear me now? Well, thank you for the opportunity to address you Union County Commissioners this evening. My name again is Alexis Rain Walker. I am actually the Secretary Treasurer for the Health Professionals and Allied Employees, better known as HPAE. I've lived in Union County for 30 years. So, our union is the health professionals, that healthcare professionals and allied employees that represent over 14,000 nurses and healthcare professionals, of course, to straight the state of New Jersey, including 24 registered nurses at Cornerstone. I am here this evening to discuss HPAE Local 5112 contract with Cornerstone Behavioral Health Hospital, currently bargaining with the Union County to add the five current Cornerstone professionals to our union. These are dedicated healthcare professionals who work shoulder to shoulder with HPAE members as we all care for patients. HPAE has been negotiating with the county since November 2023. This is until Monday, January 22nd, when county representatives walked away from the negotiating table, refusing to continue bargaining in good faith. This should be, this should have been an easy process, adding four social workers and a recreational therapist to our contract. These professionals are asking for fair pay, to have parity with their coworkers, protections on the job, and a voice in their workplace. The cost of adding these workers on the union contract is minimum compared to salary increases and compensations the Union County has already given out to top county officials and other county employees. On behalf of HPAE, I am asking you as leaders of Union County to compel county representatives to not only return to the bargaining table, but to negotiate in good faith and to respect healthcare professionals at Cornerstone Healthcare. We are standing here, we are here together, but we have recruited for other members to also be here with us. They are unable to do so because they cannot afford it. They are off working a second job in order to pay for their, to sustain their life, living. So we're asking that you can, if you can have your county workers to please come back to the table and negotiate in fear, and fairly would be great. I'm not only standing here by myself, I am also standing with Anne Marie Harworth. She is the President of HPAE Local 5112 at Cornerstone. I will have her speak now.
Good evening, County Commissioners. I'm Anne Marie Harworth, Middlesex County resident, registered nurse at Cornerstone Behavioral Health Hospital, and President of HPAE Local 5112. Our union does represent 14,000 nurses and healthcare professionals across the state, including our 24 registered nurses at Cornerstone. I want to talk to you tonight about the behavior of the county negotiators as we try to bargain a contract to add four social workers, a recreational therapist into our bargaining unit. Cornerstone once had five social workers. Today, we only have four. A couple of years ago, it was three that was, that what we were working with, but we just signed on one more today, as she just started. And these dedicated professionals are asking for fair pay, fair benefits, and a voice in the workplace. Our committee was scheduled to meet with the Union County Representatives to negotiate on Monday, January 21st. Only one county official showed up. She was unwilling to negotiate, telling us that 3% was their only offer, as these individuals had had 20% increase already, which was not true. Earlier in the, in, in an earlier meeting, this same official said she had no authority to the wage proposal. So that my question is, why was she the only one present at a negotiations meeting? The county has been clear, they're not willing to negotiate in good faith. As a nurse working at Cornerstone, I can tell you that we are severely understaffed. We are in need of two full-time RN positions, three part-time RNs, and one per diem RN, and another full-time RN position will be now available on February 1st. None of the applicants that had been interviewed are willing to accept these positions because Cornerstone's starting salary is too low. So they're not going to go from one job to one that's going to pay them even lower. Meanwhile, on December 12th, 2023, mycentralnewjersey.com published an article showing that the county paid its top officials hundreds of thousands of dollars, yet they won't fund an additional 1% for these five people. All the nurses and the professionals that at Cornerstone, we take pride in the care that we give and provide for our patients. We are asking the county leaders to step up to the table and continue to bargain in good faith. None of my colleagues were able to be here tonight because they're sick or at their second job helping clients of the same nature. So, I'll be their voice tonight. I know firsthand how county officials can be. You can send just one, too many emails, and they pull you from your job and send you to a seven-hour fit-for-duty test, then mandate you to go to counseling, all because no one wants to believe that you are telling the truth. Shame on them. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to stand before you and tell you our truth. It's just 1% for five people. That's all we're asking for. I have copy of my speech, copy of the, the paper, and a copy of a petition, 100% signed, all of us, all 24. That's all we are. Thank you.
My name is Fran Wilson. I'm a resident of Roseville Park. I stood in front of you approximately 365 days ago to express our concerns about Ashbrook office. Those same concerns are still there today, but now they're even worse. We were told that 2024 was going to be better than 2023. But here we are with the same problems, but even worse. Empty promises, lack of attention, lack of knowledge, blaming other organizations. Every time it rains, if the course is even open, it's a front-nine-only course, and sometimes it's only front-nine walking because you can't even take a cart on it. Maybe you care, maybe you don't, but what bothers me, as, as, what bothers me is US freeholders are responsible for our tax dollars. Let me talk about money. Ordinance number 2023-1052, where you authorized the county manager to approve Kemper Sports Management operational budget, and in that ordinance, you pay, you, you give $471,000 for Scotch Hills Golf Course. In there also is $6 million, 6.3 million for Galloping Hill and Ashbrook, a total of, not to exceed, $7.6 million for operations. I don't know what that money's for. Maybe you can provide me some information on that, since you all approved it. $7.6 million, a lot of money. And can you believe that Kemper fired the one person that had the most knowledgeable of that golf course for financial reasons? Your golf course is run by a person that knows restaurants, knows nothing about golf courses. Would you rather have, would you have a crossing guard do heart surgery on a loved one, or would you hire a doctor? An article that was written back in October of 2017, when you, the freeholders, had the groundbreaking ceremony on an 8.9 million building at Ashbrook. And in that, it talks about the building, the full-service restaurant, full retail pro shop, a fleet of 90 carts, and a full-service turnstand. I don't know what definition of a turnstand you guys are talking about. In there, it says, "These improvements continue to solidify Union County's reputation as the state leader in this sport and home to public golf," said freeholder Bruce Bergen. "Our courses are known for their playability, customer service, top-notch amenities comparable to private courses." Really? I guess you've never been to private courses. Freeholder Mirabella added, "Over the past seven years, the county completely transformed what was once a decaying, money-losing golf operation into a state of an art facility that has become a profit center. Our Galloping Hill Golf Course has become one of the state-leading public golf courses. Now Ashbrook will take its place beside it." I don't even know what to say about that. "In recent years, the county completed golf course renovations at Ashbrook with famed architect Reese Jones. The sculpting of work included drainage, tree work, bunkers, which were renovated and rebuilt to industry standards." Well, guess what? The money that you spent that year was like throwing it in the garbage can because we have the same problems today that you put your money into it back then. The two fairways that they did are completely underwater. And I'll close by saying this. You know, in 2021, we had Hurricane Ida, and when Hurricane Ida came through the golf course at that time, it tore down fences, upheaved asphalt, we lost porta-johns, we lost garbage cans, they all went down the creek, and believe it or not, that creek is what's causing the problem of Ashbrook today. And so here we are, four years, three years later, and we have the same problem because no one has taken the proper steps to take care of it. And in regard, and in closing, I welcome each one of yous to come down to Ashbrook, walk the course, look what it looks like.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Hi. First time I've been here that, I haven't been here for jury duty. John Court, Rahway resident. You know, I don't have a scripted speech or anything, but I'll just say I'm an avid golfer, pretty passionate about the camaraderie and the friendships we've developed at Ashbrook. It's a great place. It's been, it's been really frustrating that the promised repairs have not occurred to the drainage system to allow the course to drain or improvements to, to do that, at least over the last year. I don't feel like there's been any transparency with the plans. There's been engineering studies that I understand have occurred. I haven't seen those. I don't know, to my knowledge, I don't know that anybody has seen those. To the, the point where the course has been closed, it's been closed pretty much all of January due to flooding, we've had to, like, start playing in Somerset County and stuff like that. So, you know, as a Union County taxpayer, you know, it's a little frustrating that there's not a little bit more upkeep into, I mean, there's a lot green spaces and working on parks and stuff like that. That's great. I think Ashbrook's been kind of left out of that, and I'd really like some transparency or a plan to either get it, you know, fixed, up and running, or, or, or close the place and, you know, put us out of our misery. So, thank you.
Hi, Bob Cascone, Westfield, New Jersey. I'm one of the members of the Ashbrook Men's Golf Association. And I just wanted to reiterate what Fran said. I mean, we, we don't have to beat a dead horse on the condition of the course, but we really would like to have one, two, all of you come out, pick a day, we'll, we'll be there to walk the course and show you what we're talking about. The, the $50,000 or $60,000 study that was done last year, we could have done that, Fran and I could have done that for $200 for you. We know where the creek blockage is, you know, if beavers did it, these have to be beavers on steroids. All right? This was all from Ida. I've lived here all my life. I grew up playing on Oak Ridge and Ashbrook. You know, when I was 14, 15 years old, and that was a long time ago, it was never flooding there. Those creeks used to flow. We used to take wraps down them. It doesn't happen now. They're like, they're like ponds, so the water has nowhere to go. And I know this sounds like, you know, a bunch of guys that just play golf, you know, complaining, but you know, this is our country club, and it's 100 of us. And as a group, 100 of us spend approximately $250,000 a year there between 14-day cards, greens fees, cart rentals, concessions, and what we spend in the pro shop. Because there's not a week goes by that somebody doesn't come there and forget their shoes, have to buy a pair of shoes. I mean, we spend a lot of money there. And we're just looking for something. I know $250 doesn't sound like a lot, like it's a deck chair off the Titanic, but it's $250,000. If we don't show up there to play, I'm sure you're going to get other guys to show up there and play, but they're not going to do all the other things that we do. I mean, we go out as a group to help the course. You know, we seed the course as we're going along. We take two and three bottles with us. We go out there, we have, we fix the greens when we're out there. You know, our group does a lot for that course, and we just want a little consideration back. We haven't gotten responses to emails in a timely manner, and I'm telling you, if it takes a couple of days, that's fine. But I mean, two, three, four weeks go by, and nobody gets back to you. It's like a slap in the face. So, the course is horrible. Most of the time, four holes are unplayable. A lot of times, six holes are unplayable. That's a third. That's a third of the course. We pay full price in greens fees, nobody's discounting that. You know, I would give, I would venture a guess that that course was closed two months in, in 2023 due to drainage problems, or at least half the course. You know, that's, that's a lot. You know, we're paying for a full year there. Granted, the winter is, you know, hit or miss for everybody. If there's snow, there's snow. That's all over. But, you know, you get two cats go to the bathroom on a back night, it floods out. You know, we need a little help, and we're asking for somebody to get back to us and give us a response. You know, as taxpayers, we're entitled to that. You know, nobody needs to come and raise their voice or shout and yell, but you know, if you want to see what's going on, come there. You know, it's your tax money too that's being wasted if, if you're doing the same thing over and over again. So all we're asking is for some consideration.
Good evening, Chair mooted, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, and of course, the golden nugget, Bruce Patterson, Garwood, New Jersey. Just a note to the new Commissioner Dellisford, you know, welcome aboard, I already said. But anyway, regarding my comments through the present year, as a resident and taxpayer, I addressed the Board about the various failures and waste, hoping each year that whoever is the new Commissioner, you know, would investigate the issue and address the taxpayers about it. And as usually, it falls on deaf ears every year. Commissioners just vote lockstep, to the point that the public could only assume it's not the Commissioners actually controlling the county, but it must be Democrat county boss, Senate scutari, being the pumper master. But moving forward, I hope to see some interest from the new Commissioner on whatever issues will arise, and guarantee with this crew in charge, they will arise. For the resos, reso 72, 74, 76, 83 is giving CME associates a total of $1.25 million. So much taxpayer being given to CME, but the good news just for you guys is that CME donated in four years $55,000 to your election campaigns. You should be really excited to vote yes for your quid pro quo campaign funding. What needs to be explained on these resos to the public is reso 72 is $700,000, doubling the trap and skeet facility remediation cost. That needs explanation. Reso 74 for $250,000 for watching our county roads get paved. How many miles of roads are planned this year? And reso 83 is for Spring Street parking lot designed for $200,000 to CME. And as I, as I understand, we don't even have a Spring Street parking lot, so I guess that needs explanation. 2024-84 is a cost savings from H&amp;S Construction for the dispatch center design, so I appreciate the cost savings. However, could somebody please give us an overview of the flooding of the first-floor dispatch center from the recent range two weeks ago? Reso 101 is giving San Rini Construction another $160,000 for remodeling the county clerk's office. Another $160,000, now totaling over $3.3 million for the clerk's office renovation in 2021 when this started. I noted everything the Commissioners touched turns into a black hole of tax money. Furniture cost of nearly $200,000, whatever the architects and engineers cost was, you're talking close to $4 million. You, you always have that non-plu look at you when I point all this waste out. For general comments, the county's disaster at our Ashbrook swamp is at its crest. The destroyed excavator was finally freed after three months. It was only five months old, $300,000 in taxpayer money down the drain. But the disaster is still not done there, since PSENG is filing a demand to clean up from your wanton destruction of the right-of-way property, along with the DEP charging you to remediate the wetlands that you destroyed. And of course, we are always awaiting for accountability. Next, the Director of the UCIA, who is also our Finance Chair, was nearly indicted for grifting of hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars. Nearly. Her incompetence is creating county disasters on this ill-planned Union County Government Complex project and the out-of-control Linden Biosolids project. Yet you look the other way on her failures and allow her the extra $120,000 salary for a second full-time job at the county. County buildings are falling apart. One parking garage nearly collapsed. Employees fully exposed to asbestos and lead for years. OSHA is on your case now. You closed or privatized Runnels, Juve, the jail, Oak Ridge Golf Course, and all the money saved from that operation, which garners around 20 million every year, you keep from the taxpayers. Now, 150 million buried in the budget to date. Your supposedly vaunted AAA rating is only from apparent rampant county abuse of the taxpayers and totally clueless about the wildfires burning all around you. You need to fix your house immediately. As to Ashbrook, I was over there right after the rains. I did take pictures. That was about two weeks ago, and I'll, I'll tell you, the holes in the fairways were flooded. The creek was at its crest. If you want pics, you know, of what it was, just ask, but probably you really should go visit, as they have asked you to do it. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. At this time, I do want to thank, I know our nurses and healthcare workers have left, but I do want to thank them for all the work that they do. And as we have stated before, we do not negotiate contracts publicly, but we do have Kathy Hatfield here who can address some of their concerns.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Commissioners, yes, Kathy Hatfield, West Orange, New Jersey. I am that labor representative that the nurses referred to in their comments. I'm not going to go through each point of negotiation. I will say that we voluntarily recognized the titles that they asked us to, and we did negotiate in good faith, as I have done for the past 25 years representing this county. I've never been accused of negotiating in bad faith, but tonight I was. I think what HPA misses is that just because we haven't agreed to every single one of their proposals, doesn't mean that we aren't negotiating in good faith. In fact, we did agree to probably about 85% of their proposals. good faith. In fact, we did agree to probably about eighty-five percent of their proposals. And part of the reason why we are sticking firm on our wage proposal is because the individuals at issue here received market adjustments in January of two thousand twenty-three that amounted to anywhere between twenty and thirty percent. The average salary for the individuals that we are talking about, they are somewhere in the nature of seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars. So, we are sticking firm to our proposal, but we are not negotiating in bad faith. And I just wanted to make that clear, and I'm sorry they had left.
Thank you. County Manager Oatman, can you please address seventy-three and eighty-four?
Sure. For seventy-three, it is a new parking lot. For eighty-four, um, I'll, uh, Mateus, Rick Mateus will come up and deal with eighty-four. For this imaginary flooding, Mr. Patterson broke up a public safety complex two weeks ago. There was no flooding. Maybe those were the pictures you saw. I don't know what you're talking about, but I do want to comment for the, about eighteen months now, you seem to be obsessed with Director Taylor. Every week you come here just to talk about her. We talked about your obsession with bringing down women last year. It's, I'm glad it's continuing in, uh, two thousand twenty-four. You should get a new song at some point.
I will agree.
That you need a new song? I'm glad you agree. Thank you. You're done. Thank you.
I'd like to call upon Ricardo Mateus to address the, at number seventy-two, eighty-four, and Ashbrook.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item seventy-two, this is professional service for the Lenape Trappin' Skeet. It's a, an ongoing environmental remediation project. This, in all honesty, will be a project that's going to be continuing for many years to come. As you all may or may not know, this, this was a former shooting range that needs some remediation work. Item seventy-three is continued LS, LSRP services for six different sites throughout the county. These are licensed site remediation professionals. Item number seventy-four will be paving fifteen miles. And item number eighty-three, the Spring Street Parking Lot is a new parking lot that's going to be constructed off of Spring Street.
Golf course?
Uh, the golf course, yes. Uh, thank you. We have contracted a consulting firm, our Remington Vernick Engineers. They do have some conceptual plans that were submitted to NJDEP for review and for permitting. The plans are not specific to bid yet, so the, the point is we're trying to apply for general permits to do repairs. So, the plans are really not, they don't have the detail that they really merit sharing it, but they are available. We could, we could certainly share those. The idea is we're going to apply for a general permit. We'll get a general permit back from the DEP with specifics as to what we can and cannot do, and then our consultant will then start formulating a more concrete and more solid plan that then we can bid out. So, that'll have a lot more detail to it and a lot more information on it. And the plans are currently, those plans for the general permit are currently with DEP. There's a ninety-day review window. As with all DEP permits these days, there's a backlog, so that ninety-day window expired. They recently asked for an extension of that ninety-day window, so there'll be more meetings and, and review with NJDEP coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Clara Fernandez, if I can call you forward for one oh one?
Yes. Good evening. So, the total of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, that it, we are remodeling a very old building, and there were items that were found as the construction was going on that were never in the original plans. There was also approximately ninety thousand dollars for the wiring and the data that originally was meant, was planned that the, it would be done in-house by the county IT department, unfortunately due to complications and the fact that it was more, it encompassed a lot more than it was originally thought. It had to go outside. And all of this is going to be paid for by the Clerk's Trust account. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Pollock, if you can come up and just speak a little bit more about the road paving?
So, we contract CME to oversee the, the road paving project. It's fifteen miles throughout the county. New road paving, mill two, put two, do basins, do, do handicap ramps, everything that's involved in the whole paving project is taken care of by the consultant.
And Director, all these engineering projects go out to lowest bid, right?
Correct.
So, Mr. Patterson's allegations about whatever, it's lowest bid, like every other year wins the project.
Right.
Thank you, which is standard.
Example, the salt build was, salt, salt bid this year, seventy-four cents separated to two vendors.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I will formally close this portion of the meeting and ask for a motion to adopt resolutions twenty twenty-four dash sixty-six through twenty twenty-four dash one twenty.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second. Motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella and seconded by Vice Chairwoman Leon, Clerk of the Board. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak?
Aye.
Commissioner Dellsford?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman, uh, Leon?
Aye.
And Chairwoman Palmieri, Mudette?
Aye.
Sorry.
Lot of words there.
That's seven votes in affirmative on all resolutions.
Thank you. At this time, we will present our commissioner reports and comments, and I will start with Commissioner Bodak.
In recognition of Arbor Day, the Union County Board of County Commissioners are once again partnering with the Union County Shade Tree Advisory Board to sponsor the annual Arbor Day Poetry Contest for students in Union County. The deadline for entry is March eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Participation in the Arbor Day Poetry Contest is organized through the schools. Each school in Union County has received information on entering their students in this contest. The poetry contest offers students of Union County currently enrolled in grades four through eight an opportunity to obtain a greater understanding of Arbor Day by encouraging them to portray the importance of trees in the natural environment and man-made landscapes by focusing on the benefits, beauty, and contributions of trees to our communities. All poems received will be categorized by grade and judge. One winner will be chosen for first, second, and third place at each grade level. The winners will be invited to attend an award ceremony on April twenty-fourth at six PM and will be publicly recognized by the Union County Board of County Commissioners. Arbor Day has been a national observance since eighteen seventy-two, encouraging the public to plant and care for trees. This year, it will be celebrated on Friday, April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. For more information, principals and staff can contact Andre Stanton, Union County Department of Engineering, Public Works, and Facilities Management at andre.stanton, S-T-A-T-E-N, at ucnj.org, or by calling her at nine oh eight, seven eight nine, three six five nine. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Commissioner Dellsford?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In celebration of Black History Month, the Union County Board of County Commissioners through the Office of Cultural and Heritage Affairs is pleased to celebrate this year's Black History Month with a free jazz performance by the Bob Davos Jazz Quartet featuring Lance Bryant. The event will provide a unique exploration of jazz music through narration and performance on Thursday, February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, at seven PM at the Union County Performing Arts Center, Hamilton Stage, located at three six zero, Hamilton Street in Raway. This year's theme, African Americans in the Arts, will focus on celebrating the dynamic African American culture and its global influence in the arts, music, literature, and film industry. The event will also include the presentation of the Twelfth Annual Chester Holmes Humanitarian Award. This program is funded in part by a grant from the New Jersey Historical Commission, a Division of Cultural Affairs in the Department of State, and the New Jersey State Council on the Arts, a partner agency of the National Endowment for the Arts. Admission to this event is free of charge, but advanced registration is required. For those interested, kindly register, visit www.ucnj.org/BHM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Mirabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Board of Commissioners would like to thank the Department of Parks and Recreation, as well as Rutgers Cooperative Extension in Union County in planting of several new trees at Oak Ridge Park in Clark. In December, seven red maple trees were planted at Oak Ridge Park with, under the direction of Rutgers Cooperative Extension for H Agent Jim Nishanowitz, along with the Disc Golf Group. The trees were part of a plan designed by the Oak Ridge Disc Golf Group and the Union County Parks and Recreation Department that created a screen to separate the disc golfers from the pedestrian walkways. The trees and the stakes to hold the deer fencing were paid by the Oak Ridge Disc Golf Group, and the mulch and additional materials were provided by the Union County Department of Parks and Recreation. The Disc Golf Group plans to donate fifteen more trees in the future. They were established in two thousand and twenty-one and is one of the, and Oak Ridge Park is one of the premier disc golf courses in, in all of the state of New Jersey. For information about Union County's Rutgers Cooperative Extension programs, including 4H, Master Tree Stewards, Master Gardeners, and more, please visit ucnj.org/rce. A couple other quick notes. Last night, I had the opportunity to attend the firefighter graduation at Union College, and I, we thank Dr. McMenamin for always being a hospitable host for the firefighters, the graduation of thirty men and women firefighters, which was terrific. Honored to be there and give some comments on behalf of the board with the Vice Chair, Vice Chair Leon, and Commissioners Bodak and Dellsford. So, it was a nice shilling from the county supporting our new firemen and women in Union County. Two other just quick things. Welcome, Commissioner Dellsford. You're off to a great start here in Union County. I see you're all over Union County and, and doing a terrific job. And Madam Chair, I want to thank you and congratulate you for your first full meeting. Well done. I, I know the position that you're in and all the pressures that it takes, and you're executing it very well. Keep up the good work. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Baker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In recognition of Arbor Day, two thousand twenty-four, Union County Board of County Commissioners is once again partnering with the Union County Shade Tree Advisory Board to provide free trees for local schools. This year's free, free Arbor Day tree is a native tree to the northeast. It's called the flowering eastern rosebud. They're about five feet tall and weigh about twenty pounds. When fully grown, they will be about fifteen to twenty, fifteen to twenty feet tall. Trees are limited and are available to schools on a first-come, first-served basis while supplies last. The deadline for free tree request is March twenty-second of this year. Schools may contact Andrea Stanton, Union County Department of Engineering. Was that Andre? Andrea? Andrea. Stanton. Union County Department of Engineering, Public Works and Facilities Management. At andrea.stanton, S-T-A-T-E-N, at ucnj.org, or nine oh eight, seven eight nine, three six five nine, to request a tree. For schools that receive a tree, free sessions and tree planting and care are available to students, teachers, parents, volunteers, through the Rutgers Cooperative Extension 4H Master Tree Stewart Program. For more information, please call nine oh eight, six five four, ninety-eight fifty-four. That concludes my remarks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too would like to welcome you in this role. As, as Commissioner Mirabella said, you're doing a great job, and I really was sad to have missed the reorganization, and you're swearing in, but congratulations to you, as well as to our Vice Chair, Lourdes Leon. Women rule, right? So, before I, I give my, you know, some of my remarks, I do want to, you know, just reiterate once again and echo the county manager on Mr. Patterson's behavior this evening. It, it seems every, well, tonight, I think, was special because you really are walking up to the line of, of slander with this phrase, nearly indicted. You may have been nearly indicted for something. Any one of us could have been nearly indicted. It's, it's meaningless. The words are, are meaningless. And, you know, what's really sad is that, you know, you deliberately attempt, meeting after meeting, to smear Director Taylor's reputation and her name with these sort of loaded words that, again, are meaningless. But they, what's dangerous is that they give a false impression to our public about the work that she does on behalf of all of the residents here, ensuring that, you know, we have a responsible budget each year, that we don't burden the taxpayers with exorbitant rate increases and so forth. So, I, I, I'm, I'm, I guess, I'm not at a loss for words, but it's just very disappointing. So, on to other, other things. The board does invite the public to attend our flag raising ceremony to mark the beginning of Black History Month, and that will take place on Tuesday, February fourth, first, I'm sorry, Tuesday, February first, at one PM outside the Union County Courthouse, right around the corner at Two Broad Street here in Elizabeth. Our flag raising ceremony continues to serve as a symbol of unity, an acknowledgement setting the stage for a month-long celebration of Black history. And as part of our commitment to develop an understanding, to developing an understanding and appreciation of Black contributions throughout our history here in the United States, and actually before then, right? We invite you to partake in various events throughout February in all of the municipalities, as well as here in Union County. Commissioner Dellsford mentioned the jazz concert that we'll be having. We'll also be having a virtual lunch and learn on African Americans in the Arts, which is part of the, this year's national theme for Black History Month. All of our events are free and open to the public, and will be unveiled throughout the month. So, please make sure that you visit our website, W, well, ucnj.org/BHM, and please continue to monitor all of our social media sites. I hope all of our residents will join us in honoring and commemorating Black history as we collectively continue to raise awareness and appreciation for the historic and historical and cultural contributions of the Black community. And finally, I too would like to welcome our newest commissioner, Commissioner Dellsford. It's gonna be a pleasure, I know. Thank you. Thank you, Chairwoman. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. County Council Bergen?
Nothing tonight, Chair. Thank you.
County Manager Oatman?
Look up, Chair.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Thank you, Vice Chairwoman. I mean, Chairwoman. I, we, I'm still thinking last year. We all are. First and foremost, I want to congratulate you. You're doing a phenomenal job, and I don't know if Mr. Patterson's gonna be able to handle two women doing this this year because his misogynistic comments are so sickening, and I have never addressed them, but it's very, you know, you hate women. It, it's obvious. I'm sure that if Director Taylor's job was handled by a man, you wouldn't be doing what you're doing. It's, it's, stop talking. Okay? I'm so sorry that I have to live through this because it's, it's just amazing. It's every meeting, something about women, and then the other name-calling, sir? Golden something? That, that's, that's so ludicrous. Anyway, the Union County Board of County Commissioners would like to invite seniors and their caregivers to an upcoming Ask Community event for February. At this event, attendees can meet face-to-face with skilled professionals who offer expert guidance on senior programs and resources, as well as assistance with form completion. guidance on senior programs and resources, as well as assistance with form completion. Additionally, bilingual staff will be on hand at several events to provide support in Spanish. ASK is short for Aging Services Kiosk, and it's a program that the County Department of Human Services, specifically operated by the Division of Aging and Disability Resources, offers seniors ages 60 and older, along with their caregivers, a friendly and convenient avenue for Union County residents to discover valuable programs and services. Staff can help them connect with a variety of services, including home-deliver meals, respite care, home care, adult daycare, support services for caregivers. Any Union County senior or caregiver can visit any ASK event regardless of their hometown. No appointment or pre-registration is needed. Please visit ucnj.org to view the dates, locations, and time, or contact the Division of Aging and Disability Resource Connection, toll-free 1-888-280-8226, or visit online Thank you, Chairwoman, and welcome, Michelle. I'm so happy you're here.
Thank you. I had planned to address our golfers, but they left before our comments. But I certainly thank them for coming and, and expressing their concern, and of course, it is always frustrating when you can't do something that you want to do or like to do. And of course, I, I know I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of our team in saying that if it was as easy as just grabbing somebody to fix something up, we would be doing that. But unfortunately, there is a process, as with all things, and it's not as easy as it may sound. And when you have to deal with other agencies that have their processes as well, things do take a lot of time. But I know that we are actively working, as we have always been, on our golf course, and we hope that in time it will be up to par. I also wanted to mention, I know Sergio mentioned earlier, our point in time on Wednesday morning, Tuesday, Wednesday morning. And I was very fortunate to go alongside Commissioner Williams, our clerk, Jim Pelletieri, our Deputy County Manager, Amy Wagner, to Plainfield. And as, you know, Commissioner Granado said, it's such an eye-opening experience. I want to thank you, Debbie Ann, for the work that your team does, the volunteers that are there, the police from our team, as well as in Elizabeth and in Plainfield. We're always very fortunate to work with one particular officer in Plainfield who knows every single person by name. He knows their stories, he looks out for them. It's, it's really a remarkable thing, and it is such a testament to community policing, and we're so grateful to be part of that community. And I know we helped a couple of people in Plainfield. Some did not want the help that we had hoped, but, but any person that we can help makes a difference. So I'm really grateful that I was able to have that experience. And I also just want to mention that on Martin Luther King Jr. Day, myself, Vice Chairwoman Leon, Commissioners Mirabella, Williams, and Dellisford were able to attend a sending-off ceremony for First Squadron 102nd Calvary Regiment, who is heading off, I actually think it might be like today or tomorrow, to another base out in Texas, I believe, and then they're headed to Iraq and Syria. And it was the most humbling, moving experience to be there, to see these young men and women that are serving all of us. And I know that, I'm so grateful, I know that our team here is so grateful to all of them for their service. And I wanted to just mention our Deputy County Manager, Amy Wagner, and our Veterans Services Office, who put together a ton of, of information for the people and some fun stuff and food, and it was just a really wonderful thing to be a part of, and I'm so glad that Union County was able to be a part of that. And I want to wish them the best and thank them, and all of our former and, and current servicemen and women, thank you. And with that, I want to also welcome Commissioner Dellisford. It's gonna be a great year serving on the board with you. And with that, can I have a motion to end our meeting?
So moved.
Motion was made by Commissioner Williams, seconded by Commissioner Mirabella. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Good night.